Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We'll start today with prayer by Councilwoman Sylvia and the pledge by Councilwoman Garcia.
If you'd like to, you can bow your heads. Father God, we come to you this evening asking you to lead and guide us. Lord, we're asking that you would protect us, look on the city of Saginaw, encourage us, Father God, each one name by name, Father God. We're asking that you would direct the city council and the city manager in the way that this city should be run. Father God, we're asking those blessings and other blessings in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia, present. Councilmember Williams and Balls are absent. Mayor Pro Tem Bench, present. Councilmember Oystash, present. Councilmember Garcia, present. Councilmember Flores, present. Councilmember Copeland, present. Mayor Moore, present. We have eight members present, one absent.
Okay. This is a public meeting of the city council. Audience must refrain and remain quiet, refrain from booing, clapping, any interruptions, cheering, and anything that would disturb this meeting. I also would like to remind all of the council persons to silence your phones and your computers, please, as well as the audience. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
I have one quick announcement. The fire department has lifted the citywide burning ban. Mayor, that takes us to public hearings. We have one this evening, and it's regarding the M D N R Michigan Spark Grants for the Riverfront Ironbell Trail Rehabilitation Project.
The purpose of the public hearing is for the public to address the council as a whole and for council to hear the comments from speakers regarding specific actions being requested. Speaker must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are in support or opposed to the subject of the public hearing. The main speaker, which is the designated representative, will speak first. They are allowed 10 minutes. Any additional speaker is allowed three minutes. This is not a question or answer period. Therefore, questions must be directed, should not be directed to individual council members, city staff, and audience. Madam Clerk.
Mayor calls for public comment.
Do we have anyone here to address this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Phil Carraway, Public Service Director for the city of Saginaw, and you asked for if we're in support of it for sure because we're the ones that turned in the council communication resolution in support of the application. So I'm here tonight to speak on the public hearing. This will be the second round of application for the city of Saginaw as part of the Michigan Sparks Grant. The Michigan Sparks Grant was created as part of the COVID-19 Build Michigan Together Plan that was rolled out in March of 2022 to benefit communities whose economies and health were hit hardest by the pandemic. The overall goal of this program is to improve and redevelop public recreation areas within Michigan. Projects may include the development, renovation, or redevelopment of public recreation facilities and must also support and enhance neighborhood features that promote improved health and safety outcomes or and/or address the increased repair or maintenance needs in response to significantly, significantly greater use of public facilities in local communities due to the pandemic. And I don't know if you remember or not, but the original Sparks Grant proposals for the city were submitted last December. There are three rounds of grant applications as part of this. We're into the second round. The first approval from council for the public hearing and the council communication resolution was approved December of 2022. Those applications for basically were for rehabilitation of two sections of our already existing Ironbell Trail from Wick's Park to Ojibwe Island Drive. And then, if you remember, we did do a trail system here three or four years ago through Ojibwe Island, and then we're going to take it from the Holland Avenue Bridge up to Janes and Water. Both of those applications were denied. We did score, however, a 77 out of 100, which put us into the Tier Four. There was Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. We got into Tier Four scoring. We spent a lot of time reviewing and researching the scoring criteria and where we could maybe do a little bit better in the second round of applications to increase our scoring and hopefully get us into the funding range. So what you're going to be approving tonight again is basically the resubmit of the original applications that were presented to you in December of 2022 with some modifications on the estimates. We tightened up and did a little bit of changes on the estimates, the total cost for the same two applications, which basically were the rehabilitation of portions of our trail. And then there is a third application for the city. We're working on constructing a new Ironbell Trail to take it, to take the existing trail from the, down by Johnson Street, up over the Johnson Street Bridge, across some property on the west side of the bridge north through what's considered the Wise Street C S O Basin area and into Carlton Road, and that would be kind of the finishing connector to get us to head north towards Bay County. So if any of these projects are not funded, there is a third round of applications. Again, I said there was going to be three rounds, but only for opportunity communities which are eligible, which fortunately the city of Saginaw is an opportunity community. There will be approximately $27.5 million remaining of those grants, and my understanding is it's going to be through an application process submitted through the Saginaw Community Foundation for, for the city of Saginaw. So hopefully we'll get funded for, for the projects or at least one or two of these projects that you have in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Third and final time, is there anyone else to speak on this matter? I need a motion to close this hearing.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at public input.
Speakers, again, we will be courteous and respectful to the audience. No booing and clapping. You will be called to the podium by the city clerk. You have three minutes to speak, which is timed by the clerk. When your three minutes are up, you may have a couple seconds to wrap up your topic that you are speaking about. Counsel is not allowed to ask any questions, and, and we will go as, as needed, as represented. Madam Clerk, who's our first public appearance? Input, I'm sorry.
Our first speaker is Dan Streeter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dan Streeter with Rescue Ministries of Mid-Michigan on 1021 Burt Street, representing a group, a large group that's been working for the last year to help create some community affordable housing. In this group, we're calling it Higher Purpose. Gene Pickelman from TriStar Bank, Jim Cooney from the Hope Vale Can Do Crew, Amy Rowe from Mustard Seed, Pastor Chris Pryor from Victorious Believers, Jeff Raymaker from Partnership Center, Pastor Roy Baldwin from One Week One Street, and Hurley Coleman from C A C. So we are focusing in to try to help people and, and help that are in or near poverty and also trying to create a path to homeownership and also neighborhood revitalization. And we're doing it in a focused neighborhood with a unique approach. We're going to focus in, in the Unity and the Community Neighborhood Association, those 62 blocks that contain in that association. Our unique approach is that, first of all, we're a diverse team from a lot of different walks and nonprofits as well as from the profit areas, and we're trying to take a holistic approach in looking at every property that is within the city blocks contained in the Unity and the Community Neighborhood Association. And we want to have a focused effort that listens to the stakeholders, those that are residing in those neighborhoods, hearing what they value and taking those values and then trying to then implement change within those neighborhoods. So we've been meeting in depth right now with the Unity and the Community Neighborhood Association and listening to what they value, and they are 100% behind this and us coming and working together in this area. We're also in this focused approach, looking at a street-by-street, block-by-block approach in every property, so trying to remove blight, create affordable housing, and also trying to repair homes that need the repair as well. How are we going to do it? We're going to first focus in. We have possession of the property at 2800 Holland. It had been the CareLink business that was there. We're going to renovate that space. We're going after charitable dollars to be able to help renovate that space so people could have a walk-in center to get material goods and help, as well as ongoing case management to get connected to what they need, as well as we'll use it for storing of material goods to distribute within the community. And then also, the second approach that we have is to create affordable housing. And where that maybe influences you, or you have a potential influence, is that we're specifically going after $1.3 million of Home ARC dollars that need to be decided fairly soon and how they're going to be distributed, and we will take those dollars and immediately put them into creating affordable housing, new home builds, as well as renovating of properties. And so that, it's a lofty goal that we have, but we're looking to try to help create tremendous community impact in a very unique way with a lot of diverse teams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pastor Yolanda Cooper. Do not see her. Is Pastor Quentin Cooper here?
I don't see him.
Not see him. Let's go to Priscilla Palmer, please.
Yes, I'm here. How y'all doing today?
Hello.
I'm here on behalf, I'm having issues on a property on 2603 Auburn Drive. It's a tree on the other side of my sidewalk. It's lifting a foundation. It's a safety hazard. I've been on the city since 2007, and no one taking care of this matter, and I want that resolved. They saying I'm responsible for the sidewalk, but it's the tree that lifted the sidewalk. And I would like that fixed because it lifted it all the way up. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darrell Morris. Let's go with Ralph Martin.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and citizens of Saginaw, Happy Juneteenth. I am Ralph Martin, current president of the Saginaw African Cultural Festival, and I am here, first of all, to make sure you all know that the festival, the longest-running festival in the country, will be held here on the Mooney Ground, so on the pier, the second week of August, and you are already cordially invited. We have so many activities going on, I couldn't even start. We have STEM, we have board games for the kids, Charles McNair Chess Tournaments, cornhole tournaments, all kind of nice food and festivals, sounds of entertainment, free entertainment, professional entertainment will be available, all this in a nice, safe environment, family-friendly environment, and a lot of Saginaw Fire Department will be bringing their fire safety house to educate these kids and everything. It's just all, as you pretty much all know, because most of you have already been part of our festival, and I would love to just keep our relationship going with the festival. We have resources that you guys have always been, been helpful with us, and the fact that it is the city, I mean, the Saginaw Public Schools property, we want to make sure we're in compliance to make sure we continue that relationship as far as being able to use city resources at times. So we, whatever it is that we need to go, I've already spoken with Dr. Roberts in the Saginaw Public Schools as far as whatever is needed, as far as to be compliant and make sure everything is legally covered. They are willing to do whatever it takes, and I think something's going to come before you to make sure what we've been doing for the last 20 to 30 years that I've been part of the festival, at least 20, 25 years. Sometimes we use resources such as picnic tables and trash cans and that, and that's provided by the city, but I know that's not city property. So whatever it takes to try to make that work, and if it can't, we'll deal with it, but we would love to continue that relationship. Also, we will also be looking to put up our banners again. We'll get that, I think Mary Ann Garrett has already contacted the city officials about getting the banner erected on East Genesee and West Genesee. So those are some things coming down the pipe, and we would love to have your undivided attention and your attendance and get ready for the most dynamic festival with tens of thousands come out and have a great time, family fun, no trouble. So just want to make sure you understand that, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Jamie Forbes.
Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem Bench, council members, and Manager Morales for allowing me to speak this evening. As a member of the steering committee, I come tonight to thank you for all that the city and staff have done to support the Great Mural Project. City staff, especially Phil and his team, have been so incredibly generous to us over the years, and we are so thankful to partner with the city on a majority of our projects in the history of the organization. We just hit five years recently. Tonight, we will come again to ask for the ability to beautify utility boxes in the city as we did last year. These projects were a great way to spread art further into the city while giving artists across the experience spectrum a chance to make their mark on the city. Please take a look at the pictures that were passed out so you can get an idea how they turned out. There were 15 last year. The artist's application is open for a few more days, so we encourage artists, if you know of any artists, we would love your help getting the word out to them, that they can drop by our Facebook or our website and fill out a quick application to see if they can be a part of our projects this year. Another project that we have planned this year will be on the north side of the Commerce Center, which is in the area of the Delta Downtown Center and the Barringer Building. The mural symbolizes Saginaw's past and will be a tribute to Jim Leather, a civil rights activist in Saginaw. How fitting that it is Juneteenth. The start of this project came a couple years ago during COVID when a Saginaw native, Jesse Bivins, came to us with this idea and this, this picture that will now become the mural. He hoped to have it painted by artist Kevin Burdick, who is the same artist who painted the utility box, excuse me, the, the Health Department murals last year, but needed some help with, with some local folks to find a wall that was the right fit. Although his attempt didn't quite come to be, we are thankful to the funders that helped us make it possible. Saginaw Community Foundation, who is also our fiscal sponsor, next year, Creative Embers, Jolt Credit Union, Hemlock Semiconductor, and especially the Michigan Arts and Culture Council. We're also thankful to Pin Balcony for partnering on Saginaw Past, in addition to another mural that'll be painted later this summer. We would like to invite you to the reveal and dedication of the Jim Leather mural on Friday, June 30th, before you all head out for your July 4th festivities over the weekend. It will be at noon, and will be in collaboration with the N W A C P. All of our neighbors are welcome to join in the celebration, and refreshments will be provided. In closing, just one more thanks. We are so thankful for the partnership of the city, and we are thankful for your consideration on more utility boxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at council remarks.
Council, you have three minutes as well. We will start tonight with Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Just last week, I was able to stop by with Saginaw Habitat for Humanity. It's a good cause they did last week. I talked with Director Carmen Mora, which is actually a good friend of mine, so it was nice catching up with her. And then they're also looking for volunteers this week as well, so if you know anybody that's, they don't have to be handy, because I'm sure not handy, but Wednesday through Friday, they'll be out there again, so they're looking for volunteers to come and finish up the projects. I believe it was like 11 or 12 houses they were working on, so I'm actually going to take a tour this week and look at one of them that was completed. I did light up the city, and I got to see my colleagues Annie and Bill there, which was a good time, and got all the good hot dogs and sno cones and the music and just seeing all the kids out there having fun, being active, you know, not indoors on their phones. They're actually out there playing, so that was nice to see. It's been a while. And then I got to tour the new buses Jamie had, and they were really nice, so that was nice to stop and talking with her. And then I've been busy a lot with the East Side Soup Kitchen. I was there today. I did a golf outing, and I got to do closest to the pen, which was kind of fun. I thought it was a gambling hole, but it wasn't, but it was still a good time. So yeah, we raised a lot of money and just a little bit of time at the hole. This Friday, they're going to have Feed the Van again down at the farmer's market from 10 to 3, so if you know anybody that wants to donate or monetary donation, they're always accepting. Last year I was able to take, or last week, I was able to take down 50 pillows to give out for their Father's Day celebration on Friday. I wasn't able to attend, but hopefully I'll get to be, well, I'll be there tomorrow as well. They're rolling out the Narcan. I don't know if you guys seen it on the news, but they're going to be one of the first ones to have it there, so I'll be there tomorrow with that at 9:00. And then, like I said, Friday, Feed the Van. Also, don't forget me to eat up for the kids with summer. You know, they might need places to go and eat and stuff, so make sure you utilize all those good community resources we have here that don't cost anything, you know? So I know the Wise Participating New Beginnings Ministry. And then Saturday, I went to go see the opening of the Wow, and today was actually the day that the residents could go and stay, so it's a homeless shelter for men. It was really nice. I went down and talked to Brett Herrera Saturday and got to see it, so it was really nice to be part of the community and seeing all the great things that you guys are doing in the city of Saginaw here, you know? So it's really nice. But I think that's all I have to say for today. Thanks for coming out and speaking, and appreciate it, and love networking with my community. It's always fun. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Juneteenth, everybody. Oh, sorry. Yep. All right. Yep. Happy Juneteenth. Oh, yeah, not the five minutes. Happy Juneteenth, everybody. Also, congratulations to Sheila Bond for being crowned Miss Juneteenth a few days ago, and then to Nia Young for being the runner, or follower, what's it called? First runner-up, first runner-up. So congratulations to those two young ladies. For everybody that was able to make it out to the celebrations, it was a good thing for the city, and I'm glad to see that we're continuing to champion diversity and moving forward with really the best parts of our community, which is everybody coming together. And then also, Crime Stoppers is offering $2,500, leading to the information that would lead to the arrest of a teenager's murder. It's Mr. Carmelo Jackson, who is 16 years old, who was shot and killed near Holland and Harris back in April 17th of 2021. So if you have any information, please call 1-800-422-JAIL. And then also, they're looking for volunteers to lower the flag for the Fourth of July celebrations at the fireworks. So if anybody's interested in volunteering, please call Terry Elberts. That's Terry, T E R I E, Elberts, E L B E R S, at Gmail. So it's terry.elberts@gmail.com. Other than that, everybody have a great rest of their week. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. All right. I'm just going to let you know, this little cock is making my hand sweat, so anxiety's flaring up a little bit, so, but thank you for this. Happy Juneteenth to everyone. It is great to be back in America, back in our community, back in the city of Saginaw, and I was happy to come back to so much celebration for Juneteenth. Congratulations to Saginaw STEM, who were the recipients of the Saginaw Community Foundation Award, a great Alpha brother who's doing great things in our Saginaw community, so congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to Ms. Renee on an outstanding weekend by her team that was planned, just from the banquet, the pageant, everything in excellence, just beautiful. So congratulations to you all and to honor our mayor at their, at their pageant this evening. She has so many awards, and we just have a great mayor, good stuff. I do want to just say, in the words of Bishop Desmond Tutu, "My humanity is bound up in yours, so we can only be human together." And I think about that when we think about Juneteenth. It is a more common holiday now, but by relatives from the South, it was a common celebration in my family as a child. And one of the things that we always remember is, it's beautiful, we celebrate, but please pause and remember what this day means. Two years after slaves were free, that they were finally notified that all people, all slaves were free. And so let us remember the humanity of each other. I think a lot of times when we think of slavery, it's easy to not value the humanity of others. As Bishop Tutu said, "For we can only be human together." So yeah, we have freedom, but there are a lot of laws and legislations that we see not going on only in the state, but in our nation. And as we continue to celebrate this day, let us also remember the humanity of each other and remember, as Michelle Obama said, "There are still many causes worth sacrificing for. So much history yet to be made." So as we celebrate this day, remember those who are yet in the fight. Thankful to be a part of this Saginaw community, and it's also a reminder for me as city of Saginaw, as we celebrate diversity and integrity and inclusion and equity, that we continue to honor the humanity of our residents that are here in our community. So again, Happy Juneteenth, looking forward, getting ready for Ghana. So if you don't see me again, it's because I'm going to be in Ghana representing the city of Saginaw and Accor Ghana, and I'm excited about that, and I'm excited about the celebration. I was told on a Saturday I'm going to have a mic, so I don't know if I'm singing or announcing, so I'll be at the African Festival with a mic. So come out here and hear me at 2:00. Have a great one.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you.
Stop laughing.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you all so very much, all the public speakers. Also, I'd like to say thank you for everyone that came to be a part of a city council meeting this evening. I just have a couple announcements, couple things to say. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Juneteenth, Kamora Bailey, for being crowned Miss Juneteenth. I also like to say that I sat in on, I sat on a vehicle for the Juneteenth celebration. Long story, but anyway, I was with the Lupus Foundation. I'm a big supporter of that foundation now. Also, I'd like to say, parents, any adults, please watch your children with the railroad tracks, the trains that comes through the neighborhood. Couple weeks ago, a young man got hurt on there by jumping on a moving train. That is not a toy at all. And I'd also like to, maybe the city can look into, or maybe it's the train, the railroad that could be responsible for putting up fencing in the areas where there is a high amount of children, maybe just something to look into. I also like to say that a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about why we voted to extend persons three minutes. I'd like to say the reason I vote to extend is because the citizens, you all have asked for more than three minutes, so when there's an opportunity to vote, to give you a few more seconds, I usually vote for that, and I probably will continue if it ever comes up again. So I just wanted to let you know why I voted for you all to have extra seconds in case you need them. Thank you very much, and you all have a blessed rest, good day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Balls.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody Happy Juneteenth Day. It's a shame the guys found out so late that they was freeing in Texas, a damn shame. But anyway, you know, just thinking about that, the holiday and some of the things that came out of that after slavery, we was supposed to receive 40 acres of the mule too, and that still ain't happen. So there's been a lot of, we get legislation that come back here and they cripple us from time to time. I mean, you can be promised one thing, and then it can be taken away at the ballot box for the people that we vote for. You know, and that same message, I think about 1979 in the city of Saginaw, where we received a tax cap from 10 mils to 7.5 mils, and I was crippling the city. I'm sure the managers of certain departments don't like coming to don't like coming to the, uh, city manager and tell him, say, "Hey, we need more money." And he said, "Well, we, well, we, we stifle. We got a tax cap." So what that mean? That mean the citizens gotta pay more money for services that they deserve. So that mean now they gotta pay more money and now they pissed off. And when they get pissed, what they do? They go to another city or something like that and move out and go someplace to somewhere else where they, uh, supplying those services. So we have to be cognizant of these situations. I'm hoping that in the near future, uh, I mean, talk to a few people that maybe we can get a committee together. Me and Councilman Osterstas have talked about this before, about lifting this tax cap. So it's about time that we, we get to brass knuckle and start doing this, cause our city is really, uh, losing a lot of money. Uh, and I'm tired of, uh, citizens coming to me saying they gotta pay more money for trash. They gotta pay more money for water. And then some people are pissed. We found out last week that they, people can't even get their grass cut in their neighborhoods. Well, that lady was talking about, I used to play football and baseball right there in that field, cause the city cut it when I was a kid. And now they don't cut it no more, so the kids in that neighborhood don't have a place to play. You know, when they don't have nobody where, where to play, they're gonna end up doing some things that we don't like, which come down to another subject of, uh, the jobs that we have here in the city of Saginaw. I'm steady concerned about the, uh, uh, now we have a contractor supposed to be doing the, uh, lead lines, and I still don't see people that look like us working on those lead lines in the city of Saginaw. As a matter of fact, the contractor that came here and said that he would do it for five million dollars and he got kicked out. And now we giving it to this guy for seven hundred million, for fi- seven million for half of the work. Now, something's wrong with that picture. And now that contractor is the chief inspector for BV. So it's obvious he must know something. So we gotta be more conscious about what we voting for here in the city, so we can make sure our citizens got some money to pay these bills here and hire our own kids here. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Osterstas.
Thanks, Mayor. And now, welcome everybody to the chamber tonight.
Okay.
I know, we're so used to go, okay. Welcome everybody to the chamber tonight and, uh, hello to everybody that is watching out, uh, on TV. Yeah, Councilman Balls, and don't even get me started on the tax cap. Um, this year, we all saw in the budget that, uh, that cap hit again and our staff had to readjust. So your tax bills are gonna be at seven point two-two mils and we gave away eighty-five thousand dollars again. So, so yeah, it is affecting us. But again, happy Juneteenth to everybody, my colleagues, everybody in the city that is celebrating. It was, um, June is just a lot of celebration going on in Saginaw and I, with the comment somebody made on, lying to me, is Saginaw likes to have a lot of parades. And I said, "Yeah, you're damn right. We like to celebrate things." Like Councilman Flores said, "We're a very diverse city and, uh, we, we like to make sure that we tell people about that." Um, another thing, just happy belated Father's Day to everybody, uh, out there. I hope you had a good day with your dads and those that have lost their parent, um, that you were reflecting on some of those moments as a child when your father was around. Also, uh, congratulations to Manager Morales. Uh, Manager Morales was, uh, won an award, Heart of the City Award for community service. So congratulations to our city manager. I was not able to make the event, but, uh, again too, yes, attended Light Up the City with Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Priscilla and, uh, Council, Mayor Pro Town Bench. It was a lot of fun. And it was, it, it, it's, it's a lot of fun for me to watch our police officers and our firefighters interact with the kids. Uh, Officer Krajorski was out there all night long playing football. So it was just a really good event, a lot of good food, and just a really good way to kick off some, uh, summer safety programs for the city. Uh, Mr. Streeter, I know you've taken off, but it was really exciting to hear about everything that you guys are doing for the east side over there. So thanks for coming out and sharing that with us tonight. Uh, again, Jamie Forbes, I know you were here sharing everything with, that you're doing with the Great Mural Project. I'm excited for the program. And also, too, uh, Stars Bus Systems are running, uh, Saturday again. So thank you for Jamie and Stars and everything that you're doing there for transportation. It's really important in the city. Um, but celebrations that are still going on in the area. So this week is, this weekend, it's Great Lakes Bay Pride is presenting Pride at Bay City and Winona Park. But also, again, uh, June, like December, gives me an opportunity to talk about HIV infection. And it's, it's just like COVID. It just needs a body. It needs a host. It doesn't care who you are. So, uh, seven thirty-two Hoyt Avenue is where the Hearth Home is located. They have services for this. I actually stopped over there o- over the last two weeks. It's real simple now. It's just a, a quick mouth swab. There's no finger picks or anything. And in twenty minutes, you get your test results. So thank you to Hearth Home for everything you're doing for folks in the city. The next, speaking of Light Up the City, the next event is gonna be on June twenty-first. Uh, they're gonna be walking that night in Quadrant Four, and they're gonna be at Francis Ray Academy. And that'll be starting at five thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Pro Town Bench.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. Um, to our public speakers, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns and your input about different things that are going on. I think the, um, Black Arts Festival is probably easily one of my top favorite events, um, that we have here in Saginaw. And so I'm very much looking forward to that and, uh, certainly helping in any way we can. Um, Ms. Forbes, thank you for being here. Um, in, in addition to all of the wonderful things you do in your capacity at Stars, um, I hope everybody realizes how fortunate we are to have somebody as thoughtful as you in that role. Uh, but to you and the, uh, great mural team, um, thank you for everything you guys are doing. It's, um, wonderful to be able to see the efforts you guys put in to beautify our city with art. Um, and so I might know a young teen, I can try to wrangle into helping paint a mural. Um, try. And, uh, but I also wanna say happy Juneteenth. Um, I wanna congratulate our mayor on the recognition that she received this weekend. Um, as everybody's mentioned, we had a, a pageant banquet on Friday night. The same group organized a parade the following morning and a festival. And it turns out, there were two other festivals that went on for multiple days over the weekend. So I think we gotta really start getting away from this notion that there's nothing to do for people here in Saginaw, because we are doing things. We are making those things happen. And it's just fantastic to see all of these opportunities where we can celebrate. Um, such an important occasion, but also, uh, reflect on the seriousness of it, because, um, as many of the people I, I had the privilege of hearing speak over the weekend said, more eloquently than I will, um, "Those who do not understand history are doomed to repeat it." And we are living in a fraught and divided time. And, uh, I think now more than ever, um, people have to really stop and think about what these events mean and what, what impact it had on, you know, our fully human beings and how, um, a lot of these things are not nearly as far in the past as we think they are. Um, so I'm just very grateful that we had the opportunity to celebrate that we did, uh, the way that we did. And I just wanna congratulate Renee Hawkins and everybody else who had events over the weekend. Um, it's not easy to pull them off and they were all just wonderful. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Good evening. The last two weekends have been really, really busy. Congratulations goes out to our city manager, Mr. Morales. Um, he was awarded the Heart of the City Award. And trust me, he didn't, he didn't wanna do it. Took a little work. Um, and then I, I went to the International Day of Prayer at Saginaw Valley. I got honored there. Um, uh, first of all, let me thank everybody for wanting to honor me, okay? But I do it because I love doing it. The things that I do, they are not where I'm looking for payment. I know some people think that, but that's not it at all. It is because we need to move forward. We can't move forward if we're not moving. Um, it is, it, it, it has been so many things that have happened in the last three weeks that have been eye-openers for this city. We've had some mayors come in the city who just wanted to tour the city and they were really shocked because the impression they had of Saginaw was not what it was when they got here. They thought that this was a city where everybody is just shooting up, killing, and they actually found out that's not true. It's isolated things. And they also found this out. Everywhere that they went, I took them to the farmer's market. I take people everywhere in this city so they can see. They were so pleased with the pluck lightness of the community and they felt at home. So I, I need for everybody to understand, we're a welcoming city. We welcome everybody. And it's not about who you are, what you wear, the color of your skin. It's not about any of that. This is a people's city who love people. Now, I'm not lecturing. I just thought I needed to say that, because all too many times, we've got a bad rip, but we're cleaning it up. I like to thank Yolanda for being at the festival on Saturday. It was hot, but we all hung in there. So Saginaw is on the move. We are gonna do great things. And thank you so much for our public speakers for speaking tonight. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at reports for the manager.
Mr. Manager, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two, uh, reports under management update and I just had a few items to update you on as well. So you'll notice on the agenda this evening, we have the appointment of Mike Grineer, Saginaw Midland Municipal Water Supply Corporation Board. And that is because Paul Reinsch is winding down his career with the city of Saginaw. Paul's always been excellent to work with and he did the city a favor by delaying his retirement by about a year. And we lost other key staff members. So I think we all owe Paul and, uh, I wanna add his wife a huge thank you for the courtesy and dedication that he's shown the city of Saginaw. He served the city for, uh, almost twenty-three years. He started in October of twenty twenty as an operating foreman at, uh, water treatment plant and worked his way up to superintendent of the plant and then assistant director and ultimately director of water and wastewater services. And if any of you have, uh, talked to Paul or gone on his tours, then you know how extensive, uh, they are and also how seriously he takes his job and enjoys the job. I wanna thank Paul for his service. I, um, don't know if he's gonna be at another council meeting, so if you wanna take a, a moment after the meeting to, uh, wish him good luck and, uh, thank him for his career at the city. But he's, he's been great to work with, uh, from , uh, time I've been with the city. And, uh, if you haven't had a chance to meet Mike, Mike, as previously discussed with council, he joined the city earlier this year and, uh, he's been working with Paul. And we have a new director and assistant director now, so, uh, which is one of the reasons why Paul stayed on. Um, so Mike also has extensive experience in the field of water wastewater treatment. He worked at, uh, Grand Rapids prior to coming here. So most of his career's been on the west side of the state. So I think, uh, he is a, a very good hire for us and we're lucky to be able to attract someone like that from Saginaw. People say we can't bring people here, but he moved here from Grand Rapids. So I'd take a chance to say hi to Mike as well. And then the other item I did wanna point out to council and, um, it's interesting that, uh, Councilman Balls brought up the tax cap, because, uh, since I've been with the city when I was the finance director, we do updates on our financial bonding with S and P and Moody's. So typically, that's a ratings call that we have. We answer a lot of their questions ahead of time and then we have a call with them and, uh, we answer more questions about the financial health of the city. Um, and it's, we have, uh, difficulties here financially in that, um, one item that cited for a general obligation bonds, uh, for general fund is, uh, our inability to increase revenue. And that's primarily because of the tax cap. So, um, that's been there for years and that impacts our ability and our interest rate that we get on that general fund side. But fortunately, we don't borrow a lot of money, uh, for that. That's one of the purposes. But we also have these rating calls for our water system. Um, and we're now seeing that the impact of our long-term financial planning is having an impact on those bond ratings. Um, the S and P review was recently for the water system and that, uh, we anticipate that that's going to be increased, uh, moved up to a more stable position and, and, uh, firming some of our other positive revenue bonds. And one of the main reasons that they cited is because of the steps that we've taken for OPEB and pension liability. So that kind of action does have a positive impact on our long-term financial, even with our other issues. Now, I noted in the report, it does still set, it still does know, uh, I think, uh, decreasing population, which is our, something that we have to look at as well, because you're decreasing your number of customers, you're decreasing your possibility for revenue. So, um, on the water side. So that'll be something that I know a lot of you are, are going to be focusing on, uh, very soon. So we did have a request from the Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. Uh, Mr. Brown has been here before. I think he usually comes every year or about every year to provide council an update on services that they are providing. So Bob, you can, uh, come to the podium.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening on this holiday and hope everybody's enjoying their celebrations. Um, I get to celebrate feeding three thousand seniors a day and I love my job. I'm Bob Brown and Executive Director, as was announced, from Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. A lot of times I get asked what an area agency on aging is. It's a certified agency under the Older Americans Act, uh, most popular for meals on wheels, in-home care, keeping people out of, uh, nursing homes. I also have the privilege of working for a very unique area agency on aging. Forty, approximately forty years ago, ten counties and one city got together and formed an area agency on aging. So in effect, through governance, I'm owned by ten counties and the city here. So I do appreciate your trust in me to do a great job or do my job and take care of your seniors. I really do. Um, I do wanna say something about your mayor and everything, and I, I do appreciate her being on my board. But what you might not know is she's up in Lansing advocating on behalf of seniors. She's making those tracks. But more importantly, during the pandemic, during, when we had the crisis with some of the flooding that came down from the streams, she, we, we had the privilege of having food available when some of the other first responders didn't have food. And during the pandemic, a lot of the kitchens didn't have food. She was coming by the agency there on Euclid in Bay City, picking up food and, and taking it back to the city to feed people. And I want to say to all of you also in public service, I've been there. I understand it. And my heart goes out to you to be public servants. Sometimes the public just don't understand what public servants and public service is. Even to the guy that's, uh, you know, running the backhoe or that. So, um, thank you for that. I do understand those hardships and, and that sacrifice that you make. Appreciate it. I also get asked what an area agency on aging is. I will get to that, but we're basically the oversight, overseers and, and the, uh, the stewards of the Older Americans Act and a my choice home and community-based service program, keeping seniors in their homes, um, services. Um, we also do Medicare Medicaid, uh, assistance program. We love doing that program. How many of you see Joe Namath in the fall? Uh, yeah. So I, I got a saying, you know, it goes back. It's an old saying, but it's like, "Please tell me it ain't so, Joe," cause he's selling you insurance. And he's on a commission directing you to certain insurance companies. And it might not be the best insurance Medicare Advantage program or the other available products for you. What I wanna tell you is when the fall comes up and you're thinking about it and your citizens ask you, "Where can I go? Because I don't understand my Medicare Advantage program or my costs are too high." Send them to us and we will work with them. We have several counselors. And by the way, unlike ARP, we have no shares in an insurance company. We have no bias. We will get you and guide you to the best plan we possibly can do. Um, I've already talked about the waiver. The other part I wanna talk about is good governance. So I'm governed by a board. Um, they're not a yes board. They ask a lot of good questions. They're tough. I appreciate that. I also appreciate their mentoring and telling me about things and letting me know. Um, but I like to give a fiscal report. So it's important that we are fiscally healthy to help people. Our fund balance has a two-point-six factor. A save factor is two-point-oh. That equates to you can operate for three months if you have two-point-oh. In our case, we could probably operate for six months. Now, you might say, "Well, why don't you save more money?" And if I save money, that's somebody that's gonna go without service when I save that money. We just wanna keep enough money to keep it running in case there's a, um, check held up. But we run programs on your behalf. We're your entity to help and assist and be that social network and net for your folks. We're your entity to help and assist and be that social network and net for your folks. So we received, I'm going to say it right, Brenda, Mayor, unmodified. I come back from the days of accounting when it was unqualified. But unmodified opinions. And more importantly, our management letter has no recommendations or findings. Just basically says, well, they can't say good job anymore. But that's what it basically says in absence of those two things. I also want to speak out, we're willing to partner with folks. There's a big shortage besides the care. And the city of Saginaw had a really heartbreak about a year ago. I had to move 65 clients to other communities because an affordable, and I want to say this, I heard the gentleman earlier talk about affordable housing. In regards to seniors and the disabled, there is a huge crisis in what I call affordable assisted living. And we really need to team up. I have some funding to help. I brought it here for the ARPA rounds. I wasn't looking, you know, I think my offer was misunderstood. It's, we have money to go towards a project. We won't be the frontrunner, we won't be that. But if a program in the city of Saginaw does happen, we'll be more than willing to stand by and try and do our best with resources to help. What we're better at, though, after the fact of if you gain affordable assisted living, is providing that care for free to those clients and paying those direct care workers to do their jobs. So that's my spiel. I thank you for your time. I don't know if I ran over, but I'm glad you gave me a few moments because I don't have a lot of money for advocacy. Sometimes I get told I'm the best kept secret. But then I get 13,000 phone calls a year. So we're there to help, we're help there to serve. If you know somebody that needs care in their home, it's free if they qualify, call us. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Bowles.
What type of services do you provide? I ask the people, there's seniors that ask me some questions about what all do you guys supply?
So we do what we say is unskilled services to folks that are nursing home equivalent level of care. So homemaking, respite care to the caregiver. We help support the family, take care of a loved one. We also provide that personal care, which is also important. If you can imagine two upper 80-year-old folks living in their home together and the one spouse says, I can't give them a bath anymore. We're there to help that. So they don't have to make that hard decision to institutionalize that loved one and at least stay in their home a few more years, maybe, you know, with some quality of life.
So you guys don't help with repairs, anything like that for seniors?
We have a minimal thing. So what we do is we reinvest our money in CDs that earn interest to provide maintenance to homes. Yes, a chore, we call it chore. But we'll do grab bars, we'll do, we will not repair a roof. I'm saying, replace a roof. But we'll repair the leak. That kind of thing.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much for your presentation. My question is in regards to the monthly income limit. Have you guys looked at changing that? Or is that set, just set in stone for?
So we have two programs. One, we partner with the Counties Council on Aging to provide care management under the Older Americans Act. There is no income level. It's just a needs, physical needs basis. There has to be an assessment of they actually need that help. It is prioritized based on income because we have limited resources. The other one is our Medicaid program. But the good news is, and don't think you have, you know, it's 2750 this year. I'm also, but you know, nursing homes, they're allowed to do a spend-out. So I'm actually promoting something called a new law that would allow community-based, keep them in their home, long support services spend-out. Makes sense if the nursing homes have that ability, why shouldn't the other programs that keep people in their homes have it?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great question.
Councilmember Florege.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you deal directly with home care aides? Or when you said?
So we have 120 right now, home care agencies. Under our, under contracts. We don't provide except in transitional emergency. We will step in to make sure the services are delivered if we have to. But we provide, we prefer to hire local folks to deliver those services.
Do we have local folks applying for these positions? Or they fully staffed?
It's tough.
Is it?
Yes.
So?
But we're managing it, we're getting the care in the home. It's a calling. I mean, because you're making between $10 and $15 an hour.
Yeah, so the average for Michigan home care aides is 1440. So it's below $15 an hour. And there's pass-throughs, like you had said, if you're competing with the nursing home agency, there's a 235 direct worker pass-through that CNA's are getting. It may go up to 385 this next year. But getting above $15 for my line of work has proven that at least people will start to entertain that type of work, especially when it is a calling. And when it's a home care system, it's definitely more personal because you're, you know, not working in a facility, you're working within the person's property owner's home.
Right now, the state budget has an increase. The Senate and the House are fighting between the amounts. We're advocating for the upper, like another $2 increase to that 235. I'm the steward locally here for most of the $2.35. And it's tough, even with that premium added to it. Because it's tough work. I mean, you're giving somebody a bath, you're helping them go to the bathroom, you're helping them brush their teeth, you're helping them in and out of bed. It's physical. You know, it's, it's tough work. And we need to hold, you know, we heard all about the pandemic and heroes. And God bless everybody that was a hero during the pandemic. But those direct care workers are unsung heroes. They kept people safe also.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Oster.
Really great presentation. Thanks for coming. I learned a couple of things tonight. And one was you mentioned home repairs. Like you won't replace the roof, but you will repair it. We talk here from the table at certain times that we have seniors in our neighborhood and to watch out for them. And I do have one across the street. I call her Grandma, it's Mrs. Kidd. And I'm going to refer her to you because she does have a hole in her roof. And I've been kind of watching for her. She missed our program here. But we all know that it's just going to be a matter of time before her second floor starts to get weak. And I do talk to her grandson that lives, that takes care of her as well. The other thing you mentioned too, we talked about some medical. And I know with my father and like he's aging now and he's up there. But I know one of the questions I get and I hear from seniors is, gosh, you know, how can we get dental? And I don't know if there's any dental help out there. I know even like with my dad, it's a little different. I just tell him, I said, just go, I'll help you pay for it or whatever. But that is, so I don't know if there's any programs out there or not that coincide with their Medicaid.
It's an awesome question. It's a underserved population. If you want to talk about health, nutrition is the way to it. We get food money and we make great meals for folks and we give them their dietary needs. But we don't give them the tools to eat the food. So with that said, my, my board and the mayor is one of those folks. Every extra ounce of revenue that we get, and I'm going to just put in this chart because remember I talked about Joe Namath and insurance companies, right? We re, so we're a community-based organization. We're a 501(c)(3), we're a charity. We reinvest all our excess revenues back into the communities, back into care, back into the citizens and the network. So we have three great programs, one at towards the end of every fiscal year. So that would be, you know, basically August and September. The board has allowed me to realign money into programs, dental, hearing and vision. We do not have a lot of money. We do have a waiting list that we're working through. It opens the end of July, August, the end of August is when I'll be moving the money. So have them call, we'll try and get them on. We're looking at more efficient ways. We're also trying to get dentists to donate, you know, their Saturdays, which is really tough. So.
Yeah, it's a.
But we do have a, we take all our extra money and that's one of our biggest programs right now. And we give them teeth they can eat with. We don't just do a cleaning. We're not about cleanings. We'll do a cleaning, but we're about repairing those teeth.
No, thank you. That's good information. I'm going to refer my neighbor to you as well. Because I know she does have mobility issues now. So thank you. Yeah, thank you.
And you may even want to refer her to Commission on Aging in Saginaw. Sometimes when you skip over, by me being on the board, I found out so much stuff that we don't get. And it's not that we don't get it. Mr. Bob, when Mr. Brown will tell you, I'm the first one hollering. Why Saginaw ain't got no money? We do have money. We got money for dental. You know, we've got some money. We got Great Lakes Bay who will work with our seniors. During the COVID, he spoke about me carrying food. For those that know, this elder is my pet peeve. I just love them because they're my history. But at the same time, I had people who were sacrificing their insulin, their medication. Once we found out, once I found out, and I could talk to Mr. Brown, we were able to get their insulin and we were able for them not to be. The whole idea is to keep people in their homes for as long as we can. When you take them out of their homes, so many times, and I'm in Lansing fighting, like he says, right now for more money. When you take them out of their home, you disrupt, you're disrupting. Because they don't know these people. So Bob, it's always great presentation. I know you was nervous, but I don't know why. Because you know what you're saying. And councilmembers, there's some brochures on the inside of the folder that he gave you. Please look them over. And it'll tell you some of the services that we're offering in Saginaw. And if you don't feel like you're getting what you're supposed to get, feel free to call the Bay City office. The problem is, everybody don't have transportation to get to Bay City. So that's why I tell people start locally. So if we've got to transport, we can figure out how we're going to get you to point A to point B.
There's another table in here, the return on investment. But it is based on county. Brenda yells at me every year.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I need you to talk about the match at any time.
But it's really tough to break it out. But I would tell you, the most need, the most services we deliver are to the city.
And again, the pitch, anybody know anybody wants to drive the meals on wheels, we're still looking for areas in the city that need to have food delivered in their area.
And by the way, you don't yell at me, you advocate on behalf of your citizens.
I always advocate for you. Bob, thank you so much. Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Thank you so much, Bob.
Thank you for allowing me to be the executive director since 2017. It's been a very big privilege of mine to do that on your behalf.
That's why we love you. You don't send anybody for presentations, you come yourself. I like that.
You're my bosses.
Don't say that, ain't nobody's boss. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob, for coming to council again. And our next presentation is from Jeff Klopsick, our Technical Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers. Back in January, when I came in front of you and we were discussing at our council retreat, ARPA dollars, I mentioned a couple of our projects we were working on. So I wanted to give you a brief update on one of them and now how that's going to affect the councilmembers here. So on July 14th, Friday, July 14th, we are going to make the transition into the cloud for Microsoft Office 365. So what that means, along with the 365, Excel, Word, PowerPoint and all those applications that I'm sure you're all very aware of, is Microsoft Outlook Mail. So after 25 years, we will be leaving our IBM Lotus Notes and moving to getting into the real world and the new technology, Microsoft Outlook. So how do we, are we going to update all of your iPads? So what we came up with is we actually have new iPads for you. And we are putting them all together right now. You'll have all your Microsoft 365 applications on there, your new Outlook. We also put applications to make it go directly to our mail, our website and also our code of ordinances. And we have all your meetings, virtual meetings tied into it. So what I would like for you to do at the next council meeting, make sure that you're bringing your iPad in. And when you get here, we'll have your new iPad set out at the table. And we'll give you all the information, how to log in, your new mail and such. And so we'll just do a swap out at that time. And then, so that's going to be Monday, the 10th. And you'll still use your old email app until that Friday. That weekend will transition over to the new Microsoft Outlook email, okay? So keep the fingers crossed, hoping everything works on our end. But that is our timeline. And if any of you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Any question? So I do. So July 14th, we have to bring our tablets.
The 10th, the 10th will be our next council meeting, July 10th, Monday. I believe that's correct. So if you bring them in, your new tablets will be here and we'll just swap them out and we'll show you briefly. So if you can maybe come a couple of minutes early, it won't be long, it's pretty easy to show.
But then we go to the 14th using the same iCloud that we're on.
Yeah, in the email app. But then after that goes, there'll be a new Outlook application. You'll open that and you'll be able to access all your calendar and your emails from that. Okay, very easy.
So that means our next meeting, we're expected to bring in our tablets so we can swap them out. You need the plugs too, or I'll be getting the plug?
Nope, we'll keep those, you can have those and we'll give you an extra section.
But you know what, sometimes people want their plugs too.
Question, so do we get to keep our keyboards?
We'll get brand-new keyboards on them. And we're going to use the ones that we get back. We'll clean them, wipe them, and then we'll have them for extra ones if something happens.
Because I love my keyboard. I love my keyboard.
You can get a better keyboard. We're upgrading.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, that concludes the management update, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Questions for the manager?
Councilmember Bowles.
Tim, what can the city do to help us lift the tax cap? Can you guys advertise maybe some of the services that people will have to pay for? We lift the tax cap or how we help the city with housing or whatever?
So what we can do as, as city staff is provide information, factual information. So we could provide, what we've done in the past is we did kind of an infomercial years ago that we videotaped at, I think it was at the Saginaw Career Complex that we used to put out information about the tax cap and basically the limitations on our revenue. So anything factual, we can provide that. So we can work with any council member about, if you want to know. I think several of you have asked before, what would our taxes be if we kept them level or if we increased them over the years? It's difficult to predict, but it's something that we can provide information for. So, but we also have to be factual in that without the tax cap, that doesn't mean you're going to get a whole bunch of new revenue immediately. You still have limitations based on Proposal A and Headley. So what we talk about with our taxes is that if you didn't have a tax cap, you're looking at long-term improvements in revenue for taxes. So, you know, you hit that. So, um, you know, you hit that seven and a half mil cap, you hit the, um, the 3.8 million dollars, and then you're stuck there. But if your values went up in the future, you could generate additional revenue if you didn't, if you weren't bumping up against that cap. So, um, that's what we can do. I think I always caution to say, you know, make, making promises about services that you're going to be able to provide if X happens. But we all know that in the long run, um, it would be beneficial to our tax position.
Yes, Councilman, Mr. Silly.
Thank you. So, that being said, how does the lifting, the tax cap, what procedures? Do staff or whomever go to put that, to get that on the ballot? I know, uh, election is coming up sooner than we can really think that there's gonna be elections. So, what, how do we proceed forward, or your staff proceed forward in getting that put on the ballot?
So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney to answer that for you, but I will, um, it, it is a process. And I will also, um, I don't think we've talked about this, that council, I've talked to a few of you individually, but we also have our, um, public safety millage that will have to be approved. So that's something that you'll wanna probably get on the ballot in the first election of '24. So that's something to consider too. But regarding getting, um, charter items, this, the tax cap is in the charter. Um, that process, I'll ask the city attorney to address that.
Sure, because the tax cap is in the charter, a charter amendment can only occur in two ways. Um, and ultimately, both of those ways have to occur with the vote of the people. So it gets on the ballot either by council initiation or by a citizen-led initiatory petition. And it's, I, I don't have the, the days and that sort of breakdown in front of me, but there, it's, it is a rather lengthy process because ballot language has to be submitted to the Attorney General's office for review and then ultimately sent to the governor's office for review. And so there's, there are a bunch of timetables that would need to be taken into consideration as well.
So is it doable, uh, the time, from the timeframe starting today, is it doable? Does it seem likely doable, let me say that? With the time?
2024 election?
Yes.
It could be, but again, as, as the city manager alluded to, there are other considerations to consider as to whether or not you wanted to time that for next year, given that the public safety millage is also up for vote?
Yeah, but I'm just talking about this, not, I mean, I understand that, but I wanna get information on this. You know, because it, uh, seems to come up quite often, many places that I go myself. So I wanna know, is it doable for this, for the tax cap? That's
Currently, for a 2024 election, it, that process could be started, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilman Oyste.
So, but going back to what the manager was just talking about too, for next year, and I've already been, uh, talking to our residents when I'm in the neighborhood association meetings or in public, so that they understand the public safety millage is a 7.5 mil that funds 30 of our public safety positions. So that's 20 officers and then 10 firefighters. And that right there is always a conversation too, because I have to explain to them, you know, because of our tax cap, that's why we have this additional millage that funds 3.8 million for all of those positions. Um, the, my concern is the educational pieces of the tax cap. Really getting out there into the public so that they understand it fully, because I think for 2024, if you have two of these things on the ballot, one or both could fail. And God forbid that the public safety millage would go down because that's 30 positions right away from the city. You're talking, you, we, we just increased to 62 police officers, we would automatically reduce to 32 right off the bat. So, I really would like to do this, but I would really like to do it in a timeframe where we can really educate the public because the one thing I hear all the time is, you're just gonna increase my taxes. And I said, it's not true, because, well, my taxes are going up. I said, yeah, because you did, you have a school bond, you have two school bonds, you have the mosquito control, you have all these other millages that are, that we collect for. The City of Saginaw collects, that's part of a job under the, the Home Rule Act. So, I guess what I'm trying to say, I don't wanna be too lengthy about it, but it, it is a process that we're gonna have to go through for the educational pieces. And, and I always tell everybody, I said, pull your tax bill and look right on there because the tax cap is 7.5. But we got hit with Headley in the eighties, so we were just at 7.38. And now, because we taxable value and the city rose again, and we had to keep under 3.8 million dollars, we had to reduce the mil to 7.22. And so I said, yeah, if your taxes could go up, if your taxable value goes up, but for every thousand dollars, it's only $7.22 right now. And so when you start to have those conversations with, with the public, then they're like, okay, oh, yeah, I get it. You know, I get it, it's, it's, it's not really going up. I mean, it could, but maybe if your value on your home goes up a little bit. So, even for myself, in the, in, when I first got on council, to really learn about this, thank you Lori Brown, our Director of Finance, because we have had a lot of conversations on this. And she just, I, I, she's got information that you can have as well, just to have with you when you're in the public. You know, so it's, you've got those tools in your toolbox. Thank you.
You know, one of the things is Yolanda, Lori, developed a brochure that did a breakout on where the taxpayers' money go. That might be something, do y'all remember that brochure we did? So, maybe that's what we might need to put in everybody's hand and educate them. That this is where, this is some of what you're paying for, school millage, cuz again, you have two on there. Individuals voted to, to build a new high school, and so the millage that we have for the current one is higher than the old one. Library, you've got all of these different things on that form, and I wish, I know I can't find mine, so y'all know I'm gonna ask you. Can we get the copies again? Cuz we actually did, used to have them down in the little, the little tray downstairs where people could come in and they could answer the questions.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get those for you, and it's, I'm glad that two of you have talked about that. And it's, I think it's important for you council members because
Yeah.
You're the ones the taxpayers look at and say, why'd you raise our taxes up? But you're not.
Right.
You know, the school taxes are going up, other millages are going up, but they pay it. They, they're writing their check to City of Saginaw, so it's really important to, to understand that and, and help to educate people. And also with this millage, I agree with the education component because we did, I think we've tried it twice since I've been here, and it is not, it has gone down pretty harshly. I know several of you know that, but the education component of how it works and that your taxes are not gonna immediately go up, um, that, that's gonna be important to make sure that it does, uh, have a chance.
Yes.
One more thing, just real quick, while we're on the topic, um, one of the examples, a lot of times I will use when I'm talking to the neighborhoods is that we have development that could possibly come to downtown. And if that new development would generate $3 million in additional property taxes, right now we can collect zero. Uh, you, cuz you're, you're capped, right now we're capped out. This year, we just adjusted down again. And then they look at me and I'm like, just think about what $3 million could do. And so, it, it's really an educational piece to let them know, exactly like the manager was just saying, that we're not trying to raise your taxes, we're just trying to collect the dollars above the 3.8 million that we could if we can.
Well.
Yes.
I think it's a good conversation for us to start, you know, with our community. And, um, maybe we need to get, uh, this would be a committee that we need to start with amongst us to start putting all the pros, all the pros, on a piece of paper so we can have talking points to go to our citizens and talk about this before we put this on the ballot, because it's an educational piece. We ought to be educated, and the community need to be educated slowly, so that they can understand what's going on and we don't get defeated again with this. So, you know, it, it would definitely be too early to try it for next year, but I know there's, uh, other citizens I've spoken to that's willing to work on this with us. So I think that we need to get this started sooner than later.
One of the things, keep in mind, in the past couple of years, Lori and Yolanda both have been available. We had groups that started and stopped because there's, there's, there may be roadblocks. Cuz there were people who were saying their rent was going up and they was gonna get put out cuz of more taxes. But you're right, when we talk about educating the community, you gotta get to people that know it and we all gotta be saying the same language, that's half our problem. One is saying one thing, another saying another thing, another saying another thing. When we go and do this, I believe it, I believe we can lift it, but it's got to be done the right way. So, yes.
You just, uh, Mayor just brought up a really good, um, memory that are actually something that people have talked about and they did. They, the people that were renting were being told that, that their rent was gonna go up because their taxes were going up. And we just said, the taxes aren't going up. So it was a miss, miscommunication on factual information that was being given to tenants. And, and they vote. So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Mayor, I forgot about that, yeah.
No, that, I mean, people, Councilman Ball is right, we are raising stuff, but we gotta remember, a lot of our stuff has been a stalemate for years.
Yeah.
And again, this is some of the stuff that we inherited. We inherited this stuff. We did, we didn't create it, we inherited it. So now, if we wanna make it better, then we all gotta work together and make it better. Any more questions?
Yeah, when are we, when are we gonna do an action plan? When are we gonna form a committee to get this done? I mean, if anything, we wanna do a committee for this, is what we need to start working on.
Under. Let me get the right one. Yes.
I wasn't saying anything, Mayor.
Oh, well, no, but we made the recommendation before we made it under, that's what I was looking for.
Miscellaneous business, if there would be a motion.
Right, it'll be a motion that'll come under the boards and commission.
Miscellaneous business.
Miscellaneous business. Miscellaneous business. So, Councilman Ball, y'all wait a minute. Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. For council initiation, it's just two-thirds of the council to vote to get that on the ballot, is that correct?
I'd have to, to review that, it's been a few years since we've done a council-initiated charter amendment.
Do you get that information over by email?
Sure, I, we've, we've actually been looking at it and based on, I know that, um, Councilmember Sylvia brought this up a few meetings ago. The MML, um, in conjunction with the Michigan attorneys, Michigan Association Municipal Attorneys have, are working on updating the MML fact sheet on how charter amendments happen. So I've just been waiting for that final product to come out so that I could share that all with council because I know there's been questions about charter amendments and specifically with regard to the tax cap, so.
Okay, thank you.
It'll probably get passed at the retreat. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available or at, available at City Hall, has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve, leaving room for exceptions of, of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Do I have any exceptions? Sounds, do we have an exception? Okay, sounds good to me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are now at Board Commission Committee Reports.
Does anyone have any board report or any commission report that they're, that they are on? Moving right along, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at appointment of Board Commission Committee members. We do have one tonight, is to approve the council appointment, a micranier to the Saginaw Midland Municipal Water Supply Corporation with a term to expire December 31st, 2026.
I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our next order of business is ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first one is ordinance to amend the official city map to rezone 2100 and 2300 Hartstuf Street from M1 Light Industrial to R1A Residential Agricultural.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support.
Question? The second, okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry.
I got a question.
Any questions?
Yes, so, uh, right now with this, is this a piece of land that's, uh, that's a piece of land? And they wanna do a ready, ed, you wanna build a house there or what?
So currently, this is two parcels of land that was an abandoned railroad track. So it's right behind, there's probably 50 residential properties, and behind them are two very long empty properties. So it's going to be used for hoop houses, community gardens, those types of things.
Can the people that live in the neighborhood buy any of that land?
Uh, one man already owns both of the properties, and I cannot remember what his name is.
No, I don't wanna know his name, I just wanna know.
He's been working on this project for a while.
Okay, cool, all right, just wanted to know, thank you.
Any more questions? All for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our second ordinance is to amend Section 150.01, agency designated a building code of Title 15 land usage.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support, Oyste.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are resolutions, our first one is objecting to the transfer of tax-reverted properties from Saginaw County.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our second resolution is approving the submission of three MDNR Michigan Spark Grant applications for the rehabilitation of the Riverfront Iron Bell Trail.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Third resolution is approving the MDOT contracts 2023-0479 and 2023-0480 for permanent closure of the Merritt Street and Mackinac Street Railroad crossings.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? Did you get it?
Who's the second? Oh, thank you.
Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our fourth resolution is approving the MDOT contract 23-5271 for maintenance and operation of a mural on the Henry Marsh Bridge.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Fifth and final resolution tonight is supporting the Michigan Missing Middle Program Grant Application.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Mayor, you are at miscellaneous business.
Is there any motion that needs to be made at this time? I think there was a recommendation, that's where you come in now, Mr. Ball, Councilman Ball.
I thought she said that we was in our finished business. I didn't hear her say miscellaneous business, I'm sorry.
Miscellaneous.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we start compiling the information to, uh, help our citizens to help the City of Saginaw lift the tax cap.
So are you directing it to council or are you directing it to city staff to begin? So are you directing it to council or are you directing it to city staff to begin preparations? Or you want a committee? I'm asking a question, 'cause I'm not, I know what you're saying.
Uh, we start a committee then. Start a committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only reason I'm saying is because I know there's gonna be other citizens.
You are right.
Okay, my question is that, well, there's gonna be other citizens that are gonna come in, they're gonna help us out with this, so.
Right. Yes.
I need to know how that actually is going to be stated before I can vote on it.
How it's gonna be stated?
Mm-hmm, because you, someone just added committee and this.
No, I asked, I was asking the question, so here we phrase it, before we do the motion.
I wanna hear how that's gonna sound.
I have, uh, the motion with the second, to compile information for our citizens and to form a committee to review lifting the tax cap.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, with that?
Sounds good to me. Now...
Now, understanding, if you do a committee, I can only, it can only be three. So, and, and the three that do it, please, I need you to work together, because anything over that, we're gonna get into the Open Meetings Act and we're gonna be in violation. Yes.
I thought it was four or less. Am I wrong? 'Cause there's nine members of the city council.
It is, well, then we could do four, but if the fifth member shows up.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure.
So what do you want to, so there's a motion on the floor, it's been moved as second. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can you read that again, please? I'm sorry.
Okay. The motion is to compile information for the citizens and to form a committee to review lifting the tax cap.
Is that it, Councilman Ball?
Yes, ma'am.
It's been moved as second. We're gonna call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Do we need to put a timeframe on how soon we wanted all of this, uh, committee to start? I mean, I know he said right away.
Next, next, uh, city council meeting.
Okay.
I think what we can do is, uh, if interest, council members who are interested in working on that, please email, uh, Vicky Davis and then we can go from there. I think one, one of the things you'll wanna do is understanding that it's a, a work group or however you wanna phrase it for council members, but I think it will be important for you, as, as Councilman Ball said, to bring people in from outside groups, because similar to what we've done in other cases, they can take that information back to their organizations and share what you're working on and what you're looking for and take that educational information back.
So can we call it a work group?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you speaking, uh, city manager in regard, sort of like what we did with the ARPA, where we went around different, you know, organizations, giving them the information, getting the feedback, et cetera?
Those same kind of meetings?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you need a, a formal appointed committee like we had. We started, uh, we did, we've done this twice with the educational part. And last time, we, it, it started a few years ago and probably longer than I recall, but, um, we were starting to work with some other nonprofits to lead it. But I think if you have council members who are willing to lead the discussion, I think that will be beneficial where you can guide that organization and send the information out. But definitely going to, uh, citywide neighborhood meetings or, uh, individual neighborhood meetings or other organizations. And I think council can direct you what, strategically, where you wanna have those presentations so you can have the biggest impact on, on getting the information out.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you're not, I was, I was thinking, you know, we need to make sure we study this real well, 'cause we may not wanna have this vote during the general election, the national election, 'cause we might get beat up. So you might wanna wait off elections or something like that to make sure we do this at the right time.
Which is the next, not this one coming up, two twenty-six. But that's about the time, we should be looking at it anyways, two twenty-six. 'Cause it, it may take us that long to get it out there and to have it to where it is presentable. Everybody understands me.
Yeah, that, the, that has been, I mean, personally, the biggest hurdle, I think, has been that understanding of this information, as, um, Councilman Osted mentioned. So, um, our finance director Lori Brown has a lot of information.
A lot of information.
She's been working as in, in the assessing office for, um, just a few years. So, she knows this pretty well, but it's hard to, it, it does become more difficult to communicate these things, but if we can work together and come up with a message that everyone can understand, I think that'll be very important.
When you say a few, that mean two years or how many is that?
Yeah, two, three, I think, right.
It's been a minute, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
And that's really important, uh, Mr. Manager, what you're saying, that as this comes together and we, 'cause it's gonna start small, you're gonna start talking to more people. As we, even the groups that would work with this committee with the city, everybody has, like the mayor says, everybody's gonna be talking the same language. And that way, the same message starts to perpetuate throughout the city. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilman, go ahead.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved as second. Don't not move until we say it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.